Calling to order the Monday, July 18th, 2022, regular meeting of the 39th Council of the City of Berkeley. Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Baker.
Here.
Mayor Portamdean.
Here.
Councilmember Gavin.
Here.
Councilmember Hunnen.
Here.
Councilmember Price.
Here.
Councilmember Vilani.
Here.
Mayor Turbrack.
Here. Our first order of business this evening is the approval of tonight's agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved, Your Honor.
Support.
Motion made by Councilmember Baker with support from Councilmember Gavin. Are there any changes or corrections? Seeing none, Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on tonight's agenda?
Dean.
Yes.
Gavin.
Yes.
Hunnen.
Yes.
Price.
Yes.
Vilani.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Turbrack.
Yes. Our agenda has been approved at this time. Please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. With us this evening is Reverend Pamela Gabel.
Take a moment for prayer. O most high, we come to you this evening first to give you thanks for the day that you have given us and for the opportunity to gather freely. Secondly, we ask and most heartily welcome your ability to fill these council members with your wisdom, that they may in fact lead, with your courage, that they may not falter in that leadership, and with your sense of responsibility, care, concern, and compassion, so that they can represent truly the city of Berkeley. We ask your mercy on all of us, we ask your safety as we proceed through the evening, and we give you once again, thanks for all that you have given us. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for All right, we have reached the public comments portion of our evening. Per our normal rules and procedures, these are public comments for items that are not included on tonight's agenda. Remember, you will have the opportunity to speak on a specific agenda item while it is being considered. Remember, council members will not engage you in discussion, but if your concern needs to be addressed by a member of city staff or Department of the City, please sign your name at the clerk's desk over there. When you come up to the microphone, please state your name and city of residence, and keep in mind that you will have three minutes to speak. After that, I will ask you to please return to your seat.
You're up.
My name is Adriana Ellen, and I'm a 4th grader at Rogers Elementary School. I'm here today to talk about ordinance 22-42. I'd like you to consider amending the ordinance by allowing more than three pets. This way, people can save more animals in shelters. Also, I really want another cat and puppy. I think if you allowed two more pets, it wouldn't be harmful to Berkeley. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Adriana, and I'm sure that your mother agrees as well.
Hello, I'm Teresa Revé. I'm at 4292 Elwood Avenue. I'm here to talk about short-term rentals tonight. I have a paper that I've written, and I'm giving a copy to each one of you when I'm all set. In my opinion, we have seen a wonderful growth of new people attracted to Berkeley because of the surge of builders who bought old homes, tore them down, and then replaced them with attractive Bigfoot homes. This was exciting for me, I'm going ad-libbing here, because we had seen a drop in young families and so forth, and my neighborhood is bustling now, which I'm thrilled, okay? We could have had a very different and more scary result if the frenzy of purchasing homes was instead to flip them and turn them into short-term rentals. This still could happen, as we have nothing in place to mitigate such a situation here in Berkeley. Literally, you could have a whole city block full of this new version of hotels. And since when did our master plan include commercial businesses popping up in the middle of designated residential zones? I value our sense of community and our highly rated schools. I've lived here for 37 years and raised my children here. Short-term rentals contribute nothing to what I value in a residential community. These hotels operating in our residential neighborhoods create just the opposite effect. It is unsettling to never know who is frequently coming and going. How scary is this for the young families who want to let their children play in what is supposed to be a safe residential neighborhood? If the short-term rental is year-round one, then there will be no children from these short-term rentals that will be attending our schools. Neighbors live in their homes, whether they are homeowners or long-term renters. It is no longer a home when supposed homeowners are absentee landlords operating a business with a high volume of people passing through our residential streets. These residential homes have become commercial property and should be treated as such. Short-term rentals don't belong in the middle of our residential neighborhoods. When Airbnb started, it was under the premise of a local host renting out a room or two in their home. The host remained in the home during the entire stay. By and large, the concept has morphed into hosts as well as businesses operating these Airbnbs. Note the name Airbnb. Air is because people were offered an air mattress to sleep on originally, and BNB was because it was a bed and breakfast sponsored by the host. The name Airbnb is deceptive, as it no longer applies to what is happening today. In my opinion, these unattended Airbnbs are riskier than a hotel. A hotel at least has someone present to take care of any issues that arise. There's nobody on site, and it's very, very frustrating. It is widely published that most short-term rentals operate under a radar. Case in point would be the Airbnb that started next door to me. When the first guest indicated to a neighbor that they were renting an Airbnb, my husband and I contacted the City of Berkeley to see if they had registered a rental. The answer was no. The city was able to reach one of the owners, and they said they were on vacation for four to five weeks and that they had people watching their house. This was a total lie. It took quite a few weeks before I could finally find their advertisement on Airbnb, and voila, the first guest who had stayed starting February 8th had left a review. We called the City of Berkeley back with the new information to ask that at the very least that this new Airbnb would have to comply to an inspection as a rental. There were numerous issues with this home when they started their Airbnb back in February. To gain a true understanding of how much crime Airbnbs are bringing to neighborhoods is challenging. Airbnb is doing a great job washing over the toll their brand of business is having on communities, particularly regarding crime. Last June, Bloomberg posted an article, which I have a link for all of you. This is the title, "Business Week: The Big Take. Airbnb Is Spending Millions of Dollars to Make Nightmares Go Away. When Things Go Horribly Wrong During a Stay, the Company's Secretive Safety Team Jumps In to Soothe Guests and Hosts, Help Families, and Prevent PR Disasters." This is an eye-opening article that should not be ignored.
Ms. Revé, I'm sorry, we are over the time, and I have to be respectful of everybody that's going to get up and speak today.
Can I read my last paragraph just to urge you?
You can urge us quickly, please.
Quickly, okay. I am urging the City of Berkeley to take some actions before short-term rentals overrun our city. We need to start being proactive and not reactive. We need to slow or stop the impact of short-term rentals are having on residential zones. Short-term rentals are thought to be a part of the current housing problem and rising rental rates. I am very concerned we will have an exponential rise in crime due to sharp uptick of these groups of people coming and going from the short-term rentals. We are not immune to the effects of Airbnb and short-term rentals have on communities. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
My name is Jim Phillips. I've lived in Berkeley for more than half my life, and noticing how old I am, you can tell how long we lived in Berkeley. I'm here to add my point of view to those that have already been offered concerning the marijuana dispensary that's proposed to be put together or put up on Woodward Avenue. I share with those others the concern about an overarching kind of business and creeping businesses moving into residential areas, but I have another perspective as well. It is my opinion, and I think I've got some foundation for it, that this business has a very good chance of failing soon. And should that happen, we're going to have a second big building on that side of Woodward, Paquale's being the other one, empty. I'm not sure that's something we want to put up with. Now, Paquale's, of course, isn't our responsibility. This one would be. Why do I think they're likely to fail? Well, four out of five new businesses always fail. What was I going to say? Oh, and if you're selling marijuana, it's a new business. This might be a big company, but big businesses fail as easily as new ones do. Why do I think it's going to fail? Well, I think it starts with their vastly underestimating or overestimating the possibility that Woodward Avenue is a commercial Eden. Woodward Avenue could best be compared to a Speedway or an Expressway with traffic lights, very friendly traffic lights. You could make it all the way from Eight Mile to Square Lake with very few stops. And that's what you do on Woodward Avenue. There's a reason why there's no... What's that clothing place? I wrote it down because I keep forgetting it. Oh, Neiman Marcus. There's a reason why there's no Neiman Marcus. It's not suitable for a place like this street. Woodward Avenue has got this big median in the middle, so if you want to stop at a business that's on the other side of the street, you get over to the left lane, you wait till you find a turnaround, then you go as fast as you can to the right lane, do your business, and then reverse that process. That's not a good commercial way to operate. Besides that, Woodward is, on both sides, bounded by very narrow business activities, very narrow business space for business, and there's a reason for that. And the reason has to do with what's behind those businesses, namely neighborhood communities. And we just need to recognize that it's those neighborhood communities that are the reason why this is such a good place to live. The one thing, when we talk about this business that they're trying to put into this place, I think it's accurate to say that their kind of pricing process is the third-best way to sell marijuana. Second-best way, all the other ones, the ones that are in neighborhoods, the one in Ferndale that's in an industrial place, almost anywhere but there. The first best, online. Couple years ago, I was trying to find out if CBD, the addictive, non-lucogenic...
Mr. Phillips, you've got just a few more seconds.
How did I get it? I went online. I asked the list of companies, and then determined how one, and I bought it. I can't see how this particular industry is ever going to be anything less than a big online business, and that means this outfit is in a very good position to fail.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips.
Hello, I'm back. Good evening, my name is Jessica Worrell, resident of Berkeley for over 15 years. I'm here to voice my opinion as a taxpayer regarding the invocation done at the beginning of each city council meeting. Over the last few months, I think you've all become acutely aware of how religion can negatively impact those who may want nothing to do with it. As an American, I would fight for another's right to practice their religion as they see fit in private or with their family and congregation. But over the years, and most recently, since Donald Trump took office, certain prominent religions have played a large part in my community feeling unwelcome and unsafe in our own homes. And while I don't think that all religions carry the same hateful and judgmental values that those prominent ones do, we cannot cherry pick which ones should and should not be used to pray with at the beginning of each city council meeting. You cannot therefore remove Pastor Tal from the rotation because his beliefs are harmful to a large sect of your taxpaying and voting residents, and not also remove Pastor Adam Groh of BCC, who openly signed on to Tal's bigoted and homophobic statements. My friend and Berkeley resident Christine Gale, I think, put it best when she said the following to me, "The problem even with rotating among leaders of different faiths is that it would never encompass the nonreligious people. It is also messy to be meddling in religion by telling faith leaders what they can and cannot say or evaluating them based on their beliefs. It would be so much cleaner to just not have the invocations at all." Religious folks can pray in their own way, on their own time, in their own homes, excuse me, in the privacy of their own homes, or in groups with those who share like-minded values. But to keep rotating through different faiths to be inclusive is just silly. Let those who wish for prayer do it on their own time. I personally would prefer that intelligence, education, and human compassion drive the decisions that come from that bench. Therefore, I ask you, Mayor Turbrack, to please add a city council vote to the agenda to remove the invocation at the next city council meeting. Thank you.
Good evening, Berkeley residents, councilpeople, and city mayor and city manager as well. Before I begin my presentation, I would like to pass these photographs, the appointment to what I'm going to speak about, but I thought with these pictures, they would actually help.
Back to the microphone, please. Thank you.
I've just handed some pictures, current pictures, of the manner in which I'm coming before council about to actually help enhance my point that I would like to make. So, my name is Larry Kaufman. I live on 1422 Franklin, and I've been a resident of Berkeley for nearly 15 years. I'm coming to council as a more like a last resort situation, being that I've tried other methods to solve the problem, but not only do I have a personal issue, I believe other people also have similar types of issues, maybe not specific to mine, but somewhat similar. So what I'm trying to do is get some modification to certain ordinances as they pertain to set back buildings and items of, you know, residents that are lawfully allowed to be in the yard at any point near the... What's the word? At the point of, what am I thinking? Not the fence, the property lines. So my point is that where items, as you can see on there, where they're lawfully allowed near property lines, I need to have, what I'm trying to get done is to have all and any and all lawful items set back a minimum of three to five feet. In addition, besides having these items brought back away from the property line, it is imperative, and I emphasize imperative, that any and all areas between the lawful items and the property line be maintained on a constant level, meaning weed-whacked, cut, mowed, or whatever. And that's really essentially, and the reasons are for very obvious reasons based on this. It should be unlawful for any person to permit, maintain, or allow the creation of a maintenance of a nuisance. I believe especially in my case and probably in many other cases, where items are put near a property line and just allowed to sit and stationary, where other people have to look at them, and they're just left there out of sight for the resident who's doing it, but right in the face of other residents, they just sometimes can create just what I'm just speaking about. Furthermore, in other ordinance, it says essentially interfere with the comfortable enjoyment of life and property, or tend to depreciate the value of the property of others. I think that speaks for itself. So when items are left in the back of people's property, and they're shielded maybe from the resident who does this, but are right in the eyes of, in my case, me, the people in front of me or behind me have a big above-ground swimming pool, they really can't see it, and from all indications, they really don't give a good hot chocolate, you know, to use the vernacular, as to what it does to other people. Furthermore, it does, there's also something else where essentially interferes and depreciates. It also talks about garbage of animals, water, stagnant water, rats, and therefore, you know, I guess again, that also speaks for it. But again, it's more than just telling people, oh, this has to be away from the property line. That's only half the battle. My whole point is, what I'm up here for is that it has to be maintained, not just do it once a week. It has to be maintained as if it were the front of your house. So you...
Mr. Kaufman, just a couple more seconds.
Yeah, if you were a normal person, you normally clean the front of your house, you weed-whack, you mow your lawn, but a lot of these people, because it's out of sight, it's out of mind to the people who are doing it, but it's not out of sight or mind to the people behind them or near them who are adversely affected by it. Anyway, thank you very much for your time, and I hope this will be addressed sooner than later. Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Robert Lathrop, and I'm from the Tree Board, and I'm not very happy to be here. I'm here to talk about Dennis. As you know, Dennis serves as the liaison for the Tree Board. I'd like you to know that everybody on the Tree Board likes Dennis, and he offers a positive contribution to the Tree Board. But Dennis has had a moment of infamy. You've made the 11 o'clock news, Dennis. So I don't know what kind of reception he will get from the Tree Board when you return. I attended the block party, there were homosexuals there.
Mr. Lathrop, could you just make sure you're addressing council, not individual council members, please?
Okay. Well, this is about Dennis.
I understand that.
There were heterosexuals there. I honestly don't know who was what, it didn't matter to me. I found the Black Block Party to be a bunch to do about nothing. It was unnecessary, the conduct. So, as you remember, Dan, I ran for mayor in 2019 against you, and then as I'm thinking, how am I, what decision am I going to make about this? Am I going to do something? Should I just sit here and listen to it? Should I let it be water under the bridge? I don't know. I don't think the city's ever been placed in this situation where it got so much anger, a recall. I don't think the city has ever had a recall. So the idea in my head, if I were mayor, and I would think and talk to you about it, would be censuring Dennis by stripping him of his liaison assignments for the remainder of his term. And then, you gotta, you know, you gotta say no to some things. We like Dennis, I'm sure Dennis will return to the committee and offer an apology, but I don't know what kind of reception he's going to get.
Okay.
Okay? And that's, I don't like being in this position. That's all I'm going to say on that. I'm going to say something later about an ordinance, but that's where I'm at on this.
Okay, thank you. How many pets would you like, Lisa?
What?
How many pets would you like?
[laughter] I plead the fifth on that one. [laughter] Lisa Kempner, Berkeley resident. And I'm also here to talk about the invocation and to kind of implore you to remove it. Religion and government are not good partners, I believe, between the last few meetings, and then all the way up to what we're dealing with on a national level, we can see the disastrous results when religion plays with governments. I have been either attending or live-streaming council meetings for seven years. I think there's a handful I missed, because I'm kind of weird like that. The first one I came to when there was praying, I was like, wait, what? We're praying at a meeting? And I was super uncomfortable. I'm not a religious family, and I'm like, so what do I do? Do I walk out? You know, but I'm kind of forced to stand there and stand up and bow my head, and it's awkward, it's uncomfortable. Seven years later, I still feel uncomfortable when it happens. Berkeley has referenced becoming more diverse and inclusive in so, so many ways throughout the past few years, from proclamations to even mentions in the master plan about it. And I think it's almost a point of pride for us, right? We want to be a diverse community, but that has to be more than words. There has to be actions, and there's many facets of being diverse, and we have to take into consideration everybody's beliefs in the process, or lack thereof. And I'm not saying that people who are religious are bad inherently. That's fine, if you want to pray, please do. If you want to get a group together, a non-quorum group, before the meeting to pray, please do. Be as religious or as nonreligious as you would like to be. But I also ask that you allow your residents and community to be as religious or nonreligious as they would like to be. And when you force them to go through a mini-worship session every council meeting, you're not giving us that ability. Thank you.
My name is Christine Gale. I live in Berkeley, and I've lived in Berkeley for 20 years. Like Jess and Lisa, I am here to ask you to end the practice of opening city council meetings with religious invocations. These religious invocations might be legally permissible, but they are not the right thing to do. The city council should do the right thing by ending this practice. As a nonreligious person, it makes me uncomfortable to be present at a government meeting that begins with what is essentially a prayer. Other residents might be uncomfortable enough that they don't attend the meetings and don't participate in city government that way. And still, other people might choose not to live in a city that feels unwelcoming to religious minorities and the nonreligious. My experience is that most Berkeley residents value an inclusive and welcoming community. Opening city council meetings with religious invocations does not reflect those values. Everyone present at city council meetings is there to conduct or observe city business, not to worship. I ask that the city council take the action to end the practice of opening city council meetings with religious invocations. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, citizens. Bobby Lawrence from State Center Marshable Law Office, just here to say hello and just let you know that we're here, we care, and we want to work hard for you all. Thank you.
All right, seeing nobody else coming up to the microphone. This is usually Mike where you jump up. Are you good? Yep. Thought that might happen.
I want to thank the, there were so many, I thought, oh, we're covered, we're good. But to the Honorable Bonnie, I'm Mike McGinnis, Executive Director of the Berkeley Downtown Development Authority. I want to thank the community who came out in full force for a very successful Berkeley Pride block party, the inaugural gathering on Robina and beyond. The downtown businesses saw a lot of foot traffic, a lot of positive experience, and we estimate that over 1,500 people attended, which was a very high watermark for many of our downtown gatherings. I just wanted to put on your radar... I just wanted to put on your radar that Peninsula's has expanded and moved just a few doors down, and they are now open in their new location, and they are planning a ribbon cutting in celebration of that new location, still on 12 Mile, just a few doors down, very near Griffith and 12 Mile. And so we'll be inviting the mayor and city council to that celebration, and the community as well, probably in about two-plus weeks. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Hi, my name's Dallas. I've been a Berkeley resident on and off for 82 years. These newcomers don't bother me at all, and I just think that because of the controversy over the gay pride situation, it shows clearly that we should separate government and church. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, and with that, we will close public comments and move on to this evening's order of business. First up is our consent agenda. Ms. Mitchell, would you read the items on tonight's consent agenda?
One, approval of the minutes. Matter of approving the minutes of the 39th regular city council meeting on Monday, June 20th, 2022. Two, warrant. Matter of approving warrant number 1376. Three, ordinance number O322. Matter of considering the second reading and adoption of an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Berkeley, Michigan, to amend Articles 2 and 3 of Chapter 130 Vegetation of the City of Berkeley Code of Ordinances to modify trees, bushes, and shrubs, and noxious weeds, and to add Article 4 invasive species. Four, motion number M6522. Matter of approving to cast Berkeley's official vote for the following: to serve as a trustee on the Board of Trustees for the MML Workers' Compensation Fund, and directing the city clerk to send in the marked ballot. Five, motion number M6622. Matter of appointing the Finance Director, Mark Pollak, as the City of Berkeley's representative, and the Public Works Director, Sean Young, as the alternate representative to the Southeastern Oakland County Resource Recovery Authority SACRA Board of Trustees for the first year beginning July 1st, 2022, and instructing the city clerk to send a copy of this motion to the SACRA Board. Six, motion number M6722. Matter of appointing the Berkeley Public Works Director, Sean Young, as the City of Berkeley's representative, and the Finance Director, Mark Pollak, as the alternate representative to the Southeastern Oakland County Water Authority SACWA Board of Trustees for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2022, and instructing the city clerk to send a copy of this motion to the SACWA Board. Seven, motion number M6822. Matter of approving the one-year contract renewal with Oakland County Equalization for assessing and related services and costs for the fiscal year 7-1-2022 through 6-30-2023, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to sign the contract, and forward four signed copies to Oakland County Equalization for their signature.
Is there a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda?
So moved, Your Honor.
Support.
Motion made by Councilmember Baker with support from Councilmember Vilani. Are there any changes or corrections? Seeing none, Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll?
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Vilani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes. Consent agenda has passed. We now move on to our regular agenda. Ms. Mitchell, would you please read item number one?
Recognitions Presentations. Matter of any recognitions or presentations from the consent agenda.
Seeing none, we move on to item number two, please.
Presentation. Matter of receiving a presentation by Aunt Annika Norris of Main Street Oakland County regarding the City of Berkeley's Main Street Accreditation Certificate and the importance Main Street has for the city.
Thank you. Mr. Baumgartner, you want to give us a little introduction?
Certainly, Mr. Mayor, my pleasure. Good evening. As we know, we've been able to lock down this accreditation for a couple of years now. It does not happen without the work of a very engaged board, city staff, as well as an army of volunteers throughout the community. So as you see in the information provided to you by Mr. McGinnis in your packets, we need to adhere to a very specific model to remain an accredited Main Street Oakland County community. We have done so yet again, and it just seems like 12 short months ago, Annika was here giving us our accolades last time, and she rejoins you today to say some of the similar items.
Welcome, Annika.
Thank you. Happy to be here. This is Berkeley's fourth year being accredited, sixth year in the program. We always accredit it, do the accreditation for the year behind. So this is for last year, and all your work through COVID, which was very difficult, and bringing Michael on, you guys have, you want to come up?
He doesn't like to come up to the microphone.
Very shy.
Very shy.
We'd like to present this to you, and we like to do it in front of council because we want you to know how much work that the DDA and the Main Street program does and what an important organization it is. Main Street has been a program for 40 years. It's nationally, the national program has been going on for 40 years. Oakland County's program is in the 22nd year. It is a well-working program. It's an economic development tool that works really well with the DDA. We're very fortunate to have TIFAs in Michigan and TIFs that help fund this program. In most other states, they're nonprofits, so they have to do a lot more fundraising. We still do fundraising to get our programs because those TIF budgets are not quite as big as a lot of people think they are, but we're happy to present you with your accreditation for this year, and if we could get a picture, that'd be really awesome.
You guys could certainly get a picture.
If Vilani's taking a picture, you want to do a little of that?
Either that, or if they could, yeah, either way.
You want me to take a picture of you?
I can take it.
You want me to be in this picture?
Okay. I'll walk around.
Come on up here. All right. Let's go, team.
I appreciate it.
Interactive agenda item.
This is a lot of exercise today. It's like you're going to have to be up here with me.
Yeah, yeah.
We're all together, we're all together. I'm tall.
I'm not. All right. Thank you so much. We'll do a press release for this, and those are maybe a little more press, each in the newspaper. I don't want to take up too much of your time, but thank you so much, and thank you for being a part of the Main Street program. We've seen the, some pretty cool transformations in Berkeley happen. I mean, it was a pretty cool city before, too, but I think it's even cooler now, so. Yes.
Just want to say on behalf of the Berkeley community and specifically our Downtown Development Authority, thank you to Main Street Oakland County. Not only do they provide a lot of professional support and consultation, they're a granting organization, so we pursue funding from them, and we are awarded funding on project-specific efforts, and we continue to pursue more funding. So I want to say thank you for that, as well as the professional collaboration. There's a really strong network in Oakland County. If you think about our large county, there are a lot of very fascinating downtowns in very close proximity to one another, and we have that just even in the southeastern corner of our county. That's a rarity. It's a blessing, and it makes us, you know, iron sharpens iron, makes us be even stronger and more proactive in our efforts. So thank you for all the resources and partnership, and thank you to the city council when we had to go through this process and thoroughly review and do some sessions. They had the director of the program from an entire state do some sort of external independent verification. There were multiple council members. So thank you very much for being a part of that process and providing that feedback on behalf of the Berkeley residents and taxpayers for our dynamic downtown. Thank you again.
Mayor Protem?
Michael. Don't go away. I just want to say as a downtown business owner, I know all the work that goes into this and the continuing work that happens. So thank you, Main Street. Thank you, Michael, and the DDA, the businesses, all the resident volunteers, because without them, without you, we couldn't pull this off. There are so many components, and I, as a business owner, am grateful for what Main Street brings to our downtown and as a resident as well. And I think a lot of times, we don't, we don't see the immediate benefit, but, you know, change happens so incrementally and slowly, then all of a sudden, things are percolating and they're happening, and it's for the benefit of all. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you all. I just want to thank everybody. I don't want to be out thanked here.
Right.
Main Street Oakland, Mike, the DDA, all the residents, everybody.
Everywhere.
Thank you. Excellent. Thank you, guys. Ms. Mitchell, would you please read item number three on tonight's agenda?
Motion number M6922. Matter of approving the appointments to various boards and commissions.
Is there a motion to approve M6922?
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Councilmember Price with support from Councilmember Baker first. Mr. Baumgartner.
Mr. Mayor, we continue to advertise openings and vacancies on our various boards and commissions, and we continue to have a great response from the community, giving us a very difficult task of selecting individuals we recommend to this body for appointment. That process is ongoing, and even through this evening, where we have two potential appointees brought before you. The first is Mr. Jacob Robinson from the Citizens Engagement Advisory Committee. Per our normal process, the interim chair for that body, as well as the staff liaison and the council liaison, reviewed applications and discussed a potential individual to put forth, and Mr. Robinson was a lucky individual. And the next up is the Library Board, with Ms. Margaret McGee, potentially will be appointed to a term expiring in July of 2027. As you know, the ordinance does task the Library Board with reviewing applications, performing interviews, and making a recommendation. You'll see that's included in your packet here. They likewise had a very difficult time with wonderful volunteer applications, and ultimately ended up performing four interviews and selecting one individual to put forth for you this evening. So that is Ms. McGee.
Well, thank you. Questions from council on any of our applicants or kudos? As the city manager mentioned, you know, it's not always that we have multiple people that want to serve on particular boards and committees, and then the unenviable task of choosing, and in this case, as Mr. Baumgartner outlined the way that that happens. But that doesn't mean that we're not still looking for volunteers in multiple other spaces in the community, and I want to thank everybody who has expressed interest in helping to serve our community. As you know, without our volunteers and these boards and commissions, our city wouldn't be the city that it is. So I'm incredibly thankful, and I want to welcome Mr. Robinson and Ms. McGee if they should be so lucky to get approved by this body. And I want to thank everybody who has expressed an interest in giving their time and their talents to serve our community. Okay, thank you. Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on M6922?
Henan?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Vilani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes. Officially welcome, Mr. Robinson and Ms. McGee. Sorry, I jumped the gun a little bit there. Ms. Mitchell, we move on to item number four, please, on tonight's agenda.
Motion number M7022. Matter of approving marijuana business license, PMA 20-0003, for Operation Grow Butter to be located at 2222 West 11 Mile Road.
Is there a motion to approve M7022?
So moved.
Twenty-two, by the way.
Support.
Okay, motion made by Councilmember Vilani with support from Mayor Protem, Dean. Mr. Baumgartner?
Mr. Mayor, as with, this is the third applicant to make it to this point in our process. Like with, as with the other two, this applicant has been through the application process, a appeal process, a scoring process, a site plan review process, and outcomes before you this evening to receive final business license approval. Operation Grow DBA Butter was PMA Application 0003. They were the only entity to receive a perfect score of 315 out of 315, so they were the number one entity in our scoring matrix. So again, like with the other ones, this application did receive site plan approval with some conditions that apply to their proceeding through the construction permitting process, and they'll be handled with Community Development Director, Ms. Kapilansky, with who they'll work with more directly should they be approved this evening. So your applicant is here this evening. I don't know if you can tell which ones they are, but they are able to be approved this evening and have that recommendation.
Any comments? You don't have to.
Yeah, no, just wanted to say thank you. You know, it's been a long process, and we're here, we're ready to get going and submit for permits as soon as possible.
Thank you.
Thank you for your continued support. We're here to get behind what we committed to do and start a great thriving business that, that fine gentleman succeeds, doesn't fail. So we're here to follow through on that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Community Development Director, any comments? Don't have to. Again, I'm just out here putting people on the spot. Okay, all right, great. Questions from council? Councilmember Henan?
Yeah, just for the applicants, if you're approved tonight, when do you expect to start construction, and when do you anticipate opening?
We're going to submit for our permits as soon as we have our construction documents done, which should be in like two weeks. So after that review process, we're ready, we already have a general contractor signed up, we're ready to start building, and most likely April 1st be ready to start doing business.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Additional questions, comments? Seeing none. Well, thank you for being with us this evening and answering any questions. Seeing no additional questions or comments from anybody. Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on M7022?
Price?
Yes.
Vilani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes. M7022 has been approved. Ms. Mitchell, we now move on to item number five, please.
Motion number M7122. Matter of approving special land use request, PSU-01-22, at 2684 Coolidge Highway and 2688 Coolidge Highway, to permit outdoor dining in the downtown district.
Is there a motion to approve M7122?
So moved, Your Honor.
Support.
Motion made by Councilmember Baker. Was it you, Councilmember Gavin, with support from Councilmember Gavin? Mr. Baumgartner?
Mr. Mayor, this item also comes to you by way of the Planning Commission, where it did receive a positive recommendation from that body after holding a public hearing. Per, as the memo indicates, per our ordinance, outdoor dining does still require a special land use under our zoning. It's an area that we have cited as potentially, maybe subject to an update in the future, but the black hop, Brew Stillery, is still working its way through the existing zoning code. Before you this evening is Community Development Director, Kristin Kapilansky, who can update you on any additional items here.
Sorry, Kristin, I tried to call you up a little ahead, just to get you warmed up before you got in.
That's okay. Hi, everyone. I don't really have anything additional to add. This was pretty straightforward. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. They did come into the Community Development Department for interior and exterior renovations. Those were approved administratively, and we are very excited to keep them moving forward.
Any questions for our Community Development Director?
Thank you, Your Honor. We're very excited to see the space be activated here along Coolidge Highway as part of our thriving downtown. Do we have any insights into the potential timing for when they may begin construction and when they may be open for business?
I do not have any insights into that, but I can get back to you.
Sure, thank you. Well, we're certainly rooting for them to proceed if it should pass council tonight. Very happy to have them as an addition to our downtown, and thank you for your leadership and your multiple roles throughout this process here, and really happy to see this added to our downtown. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional questions, comments? Councilmember Henan?
Yeah, so this is more of a comment. You know, I will be voting to approve this. I have some concerns about parking. We're taking parking away, but we have that big municipal lot behind it. But the short of it is, I just don't, I don't know. We don't have the data to make informed decisions when it comes to parking things in the city. So I know the DDA is highly interested in doing a parking study, and I'm interested for the city to chip in as well and contribute with that, especially before we start rezoning, looking at the rezoning ordinances. I think it's important that we get good, solid data, so when things like this, other things come before us, we can be making solid, data-driven decisions. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Vilani?
Director McGinnis, possibly we could get some bike racks if this is all approved outside of there to also promote our walkable and bikable community and safe transportation to and from the Brew Stillery.
He's nodding in support. Not necessarily, I shouldn't say support, in agreement, at least right now, for those of you that can't see him. Any additional questions or comments? Well, officially welcome, Kristin, because I was not here prior to this, I didn't get to see you on day one, but thank you. And as is mentioned, you were involved in a lot of different parts of the process here. So thank you, and it is something, yes, we are certainly excited to see that space active again. I know that it was a big topic of conversation. I know that it was a big topic of conversation at the Street Art Fest this weekend, and a lot of people pointing to where this potentially could be in the future. Seeing no additional questions or comments? Oh, you got a question or a comment? Oh, come on up.
I want to thank you very much for your department and your predecessor's work. I mean, it's a very involved process. The applicants have been in communication with the Downtown Development Authority, I think, since December. It's been a very long time, and it's a very, you know, there's a lot of steps to go through. But we have spoken with them about, you know, if they were to be successful ultimately in acquiring the property and getting to the final steps they need with the appropriate city departments, about partnership with our mural program, because it's a very prominent wall, the facade enhancement program, because obviously they're, they're making some facade enhancements, and we're grateful for that. But it's a really important part of our, of our downtown to, it can really be a real strong catalyst for further transformation and growth of our downtown businesses. And I'm grateful for the applicants, in part through Community Development's encouragement, connecting with the neighboring businesses, because they'd be impacted by some of these considerations. So there has been that communication, so they aren't taken by surprise. They can coordinate proactively so that everyone can thrive. And what we want for our downtown is for it to be activated all week long, all parts of the day, within reason and noise ordinances, et cetera. But that, that's when downtown Berkeley will, will be most alive. And I think that this venue, should they be able to, everything fall into place, will really enhance us being all the more alive on the Coolidge stretch of our downtown. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mike.
Bike racks too. I'm saying that is a very viable spot for bike racks. If the Department of Public Works says there's enough.
Mr. Director?
Any comments?
No? Okay, yeah. Martin has a comment in the middle. You can get caught. All right. Thank you, thank you all for that. Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll before we get too far off the rails here on M seventy-one twenty-two?
Vilani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henin?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes. Ms. Mitchell, would you please read item number six?
Motion number M seventy-two twenty-two, matter of authorizing the City Manager to approve the proposal from Hubbell, Roth &amp; Clark, Inc., HRC, to provide professional engineering services at a cost not to exceed ten thousand eight hundred forty-nine dollars and forty-eight cents for Oxford Park path extension. Funds for this expenditure will come from account number six-one-four dash nine-five-zero dash eight-two-one dash zero-zero-zero.
Is there a motion to approve M seventy-two twenty-two?
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Mayor Pro Tem Dean with support from Councilmember Price. Mr. Baumgart?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The one road that does not connect Oxford Park by a sidewalk is Oxford Road. So it was a budgeted project in order to complete the continual improvements of that park to make that connection there. Teresa has worked very closely with HRC's design and engineering team in order to get this item to you this evening. She has great information provided to you by a memo in your packet.
Director McCarleton, thank you.
Good evening. So this continues the original park plan that we had for Oxford Park. It kind of connects the park from one end to the other, which is really nice. We see people walking through on the pathway all the time right now, but if they want to go to Oxford or go north, they're walking on grass. So this will basically just continue that. It'll take you to the main pathway. It'll also take you to the small toddler section that was recently installed. That's been very popular. It'll also give you a route to the seating area that doesn't go directly through the splash pad, because not everybody wants to get wet to go to the seating area. So it's pretty straightforward. This will allow us to engage with HRC to then do the bidding process, and then we hope to see you back here late September, early October, to award the bid for the walkway, and then we hope to get the work done late fall this year.
Excellent. Questions for our Director of Parks and Recreation?
I have a question.
Councilmember Price.
Yes, thank you. I'm excited about this improvement, the accessibility, the access. Fantastic. I did notice a note of potential rain garden in this. Could you speak a little bit about that possibility and how HRC would be involved in that?
Sure. So that's something that we're looking at in two of our parks, in both J.C. and Oxford. We're working with Public Works, and then we're working with a couple other entities. The City Manager is aware of this. HRC would identify some areas that would be a good spot to put that within the walkway or somewhere else. And so that was sort of an added thing that we thought that we would work with them while we're doing these walkways, and that it would be a good addition to this park as well as J.C.
Fantastic. I think having that information as we're looking for ways to be more sustainable and to better manage our floodwater, it's very helpful. So thank you for including that.
Hopefully that happen at both parks within the next one to two years.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions? Well, Teresa, you've done a wonderful job with this continuing on, and yes, as has been mentioned, it's the final connection to Oxford, to Oxford Park, but also connecting the rest of the paths that are traversed quite regularly, as you are all aware. It's been a very, very well-utilized park for all ages, plenty of adults in that splash pad as well, every day. So thank you for being with us this evening and bringing this to us. Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on M seventy-two twenty-two?
Baker?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henin?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Vilani?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes. We now move on to item number seven, please.
Motion number M seventy-three twenty-two, matter of approving the purchase of a video surveillance and access control system for the Department of Public Works at a total cost not to exceed seventy-seven thousand one hundred forty-nine dollars and seventy-nine cents from Presidio. Funds will come from an amended account, five-nine-two-dash-five-three-six-dash-nine-eight-two-dash-five-nine-two.
Is there a motion to approve M seventy-three twenty-two?
So moved.
Support.
Moved by Councilmember Gavin with support from Councilmember Vilani. Mr. Baumgart?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The DBW renovation project continues to proceed. We're actually closing in on the final weeks of the construction portion of this, and have our sights set on having DPW make the move soon. Part of this project was always intended to include access control and video surveillance. We have a ton of assets, as we know, as we go through the budget every year, at that facility. Not only that is our own, but that we share actually with some other communities, including gas and fuel. So controlling that access is, is vital, and so we'd like to move forward on actually starting the next phase of this particular project. As mentioned in the motion, this would be, come from an amended budget. Costs on this did come in higher than anticipated initially when we put the project together last year, but it would be essentially cost-neutral through a budget management process, as we are seeing savings in the five-nine-two account in other places. So we don't see this exacerbating any sort of deficit in any way. In fact, the fund is slated to finish ahead of what we originally anticipated during the budgeting process. So Mr. Young is here to provide any logistical information on that.
Mr. Director, you've been alluded to numerous times this evening. I will now allow you an opportunity to speak on.
Yes.
Thank you. This is kind of long overdue. Council's been gracious enough. We've had a major changeover in equipment and materials. We've got a lot of money that sits down in that yard. Right now, there's not a lot of oversight. We've got a gate that's just padlocks. Multiple communities are using that facility. We wanted something to have a more secure area for that equipment, more secure area for staff. So the card access controls for the doors, gate controls, video surveillance. And this would be a system, it's the start of a system that could be used citywide. So it'd be the beginning platform for the other municipal buildings. Stan was kind of the brainchild of this.
You want to come up too, Stan?
Sure.
Might as well. Let's get everybody in here.
You can see you're talking.
He's just gonna sit. Moral support.
But yeah, it's beginning steps of the future for the rest of the buildings. The servers and the storage and all that stuff is kind of added to this fund.
Okay. Mr. Lusk, is there anything you would like to add?
I don't know.
Okay.
Right now, the public safety, this was part of the dispatch project a couple years ago. They already have the new camera system, and this is just building upon their system right now. So we'll eventually add City Hall, other city buildings. The access control will be a new server. That's the start of, with DPW being first, public safety is planning to do some access controls there. We just buy licenses for each of the doors. So this is just, this is not a huge cost just for DPW. This is going to eventually spread citywide. So it's just, this is a, a large initial investment that will hopefully pay off in the long run.
Excellent, thank you. Councilmember Baker?
Thank you, Your Honor. I thank you to you both for this excellent progress here. Anything you can share in terms of a potential timing of when this might be installed in the next, you know, should it pass council tonight?
With today's, there's been a lot of promises made on when things will be installed and when things will be delivered. Six to eight weeks is probably reasonable, but there's no guarantees.
So we're susceptible to the supply chain issues, just like everybody else? Okay, excellent.
Even, we've got doors down there waiting on hardware that have been fourteen weeks waiting on a doorknob.
Heck, yeah, yeah. Doorknobs are crazy fun stuff, huh? So any, any kind of additional training or timing that might be necessary to ensure that this can be used appropriately?
I wouldn't think so. I, you know, it's basically the guy's got a swipe card, and each vehicle have a tag on it. So a city-owned vehicle will pull up to the gate, the gate will open, the system will track who came in.
Yep.
They came in, they left. It's pretty user-friendly.
It sounds like it's pretty straightforward. So if, if we were to encounter any kind of unauthorized access, who would be notified and what's their response protocol?
Well, initially, I believe it's monitored out of public safety, so they'll have a screen up there, and they can see everything. So they would be the first ones to notice something.
And no safer hands than them, isn't that true? Great, thank you.
Thank you. It is unfortunate, as our director alluded to, and that everybody, I think at least around here, is dealing with potential issues on getting things shipped, and as soon as it is, and we are excited to have this, and really for the mention, not only for the reasons of Mr. Young that you mentioned at DPW, but also the impact, the greater impact that it's going to have in our community, that this is the first step to really improve some of our security and access methods down the road. So I'm very pleased that that is happening, that we are able to take a vote on this right now. If nobody else has anything they want to add? Well, let's see if, see if it's gonna work out. Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on M seventy-three twenty-two?
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henin?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Vilani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes. Seventy-three twenty-two has been approved. Ms. Mitchell, would you please read item number eight on tonight's agenda?
Motion number M seventy-four twenty-two, matter of approving the purchase of a twenty-twenty-three Algen Broom Badger Sweeper at a total cost not to exceed two-hundred-ninety-thousand dollars from Bell Equipment Company.
Is there a motion to approve M seventy-four twenty-two?
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Mayor Pro Tem Dean with support from Councilmember Henin. Mr. Baumgart?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a budgeted item that we discussed previously during those conversations. We continue to be able to utilize cooperative purchasing, you know, basically pooling our power with several other communities to see the, the best price possible. And this is not coming out of general fund, but rather this actually comes directly from the, the road funds that we have, our two-oh-two in this situation. But as you remember, we have a major road fund and a local road fund. Since this is a road item, it comes from the road fund. So all that's, all that's included in your memo there, as well as the justification and some of the specs. Mr. Blanchard, I believe, has signed off on this. He at least just looked at it, and so the gear ratios were, were positive and approved.
He did tell me he's looked at it. Anything you'd like to add, Sean?
So yeah, this is probably one of our most visible pieces of equipment. Not so much more anymore. We've moved a lot of night sweeping to try and work around some of the parking complaints, and people don't get swept on time. But this is one of the things that is most noticed when it doesn't happen. And lately, past couple years, we've been having some breakdowns, and it's been very difficult to get parts. Rental equipment's not really available. And it's something, we previously had two sweepers. We, we moved to a single sweeper back when funds were tight. We had two really old sweepers. So we deleted one that needed some major repairs and bought and purchased a new one. And we've been getting by with one, but two is really, I feel, is the right number. It helps us out tremendously during leaf season. If you notice, during leaf season, in the initial pickups, some streets may get swept and some don't. Part of that is we have two crews out doing leaves, and the sweeper can't keep up. That's our weak point, is the sweeper. And when it goes down, we're, we're really hurt.
Questions for our director on the sweeper? Mayor Pro Tem?
Thank you. I noticed that this does not require a CDL to operate, so technically I could drive it.
Come on down.
And when we get that new camera system easy, I can just swipe the card and pull right into the lot, and we're good.
We're good.
All right, I'm your backup.
I would, I would write that down.
It's been recorded.
No increase in salary?
No, no. Even better.
Decrease.
Right.
Councilmember Henin?
Yes. Do we know roughly when it might be delivered? And, and will there need to be any training when we get it? It sounds like no, but.
No, I mean, I'm interested if there's training.
Training-wise, it, there really should be very minimal training. We've rented this similar sweeper. Actually, this exact model we've rented in the past, and the guys really enjoy driving it. They picked it up really quick. As far as a promise time, they gave me a delivery date of three months to a year.
Oh, wow.
It's not at the norm on everything we're getting now. I'm hoping it's closer to three months we have it before leaf season. That's what we're shooting for, but it could be up to a year.
Okay.
Thank you.
Additional questions?
Mr. Mayor, just an additional commentary from me?
Certainly.
This is more than an aesthetic tool for us. I know that clean streets look great, and absolutely are something that we tout, but this material doesn't just whisk it away like our normal broom would do. This, this truck actually collects it, and every bit of material that's collected off the streets is something that doesn't end up in a catch basin, and therefore the community and our combined sewer system. So it, it's more than just beautiful. It is a functional machine for the entirety of the community.
Did you have, I don't know, you were just pointing over there? Okay. Yes, and it does look like the technology has come a long way since we saw the little, you know, Plexiglas, what looked like square, just driving down the road. Actually, I have a nice vehicle. It even has power locks, which is, it's nice. That's good. We'll keep our streets clean. And as the City Manager mentioned, it does far more than just what most people see when it, you know, kind of cleans up the street. There's a reason that we do this. There's a reason we're making this investment. We're going to discuss or vote on making this investment because the aesthetics, but also the functionality and the protection for our combined sewer systems, incredibly important, and for safety of all that traverse those roads. No, seeing no additional questions or comments. Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on M seventy-four twenty-two?
Gavin?
Yes.
Henin?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Vilani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes. Ms. Mitchell, would you please read item number nine on tonight's agenda?
Motion number M seventy-five twenty-two, matter of adopting the revisions to the City of Berkeley Downtown Development Authority bylaws.
Is there a motion to approve M seventy-five twenty-two?
So moved, Your Honor.
Support.
Motion made by Councilmember Baker with support from Councilmember Price. Mr. Baumgart?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Per our state statute, as well as our own ordinances, the DDA Board of Trustees is one of two approving entities for updates to their bylaws. Not only does it have to be approved by the, the Board of Trustees, but it also has to be approved by the local governing body as well, in this case, the City Council. So this is why this comes before you this evening. As noted in Mr. McGinnis's memo, he's, he's put forth sort of a timeline of how this got to you, as well as an itemized list of the changes proposed by the DDA Board of Trustees, and voted on and affirmed by that body. So I believe Mr. McGinnis is still here, if you have any other further questions.
Mr. McGinnis, anything you'd like to add or give a little more color?
Thank you. The City Manager helped give us a nice synopsis. I want to acknowledge the work of my predecessor, the previous Executive Director, Jennifer Finney, now Jennifer Axe. She did a lot of work that laid the foundation for this. This is essentially is a omnibus, a catch of, of multiple revisions over the last few years that the Board of Directors and their organization committee has been researching, reviewing, and consulting with a law firm that specializes in, in that DDA world. And so hopefully, the summary that I provided was, was straightforward, but I'm happy to field any questions that might be unclear or would like to know the rationale behind it, and I'll do my level best to offer that rationale.
Very high expectations for that level of best. Questions for our Executive Director? You did such a wonderful job spelling it out. Okay, Councilmember Price.
Thank you. Thank you for this work and the clear summary. I, I would love to hear more about the strategic planning session, what that entails, and, and why you propose moving it to biannual instead of annual.
I think it was a, a function of practicality in terms of it not happening. I think it was a function of practicality in terms of it not happening period, and so they wanted to make it more attainable. Were required by state statute to have informational meetings twice a year to engage with the community and let them know about sort of our goals for the year. And I think the vision was to try and to work into that life cycle of public facing and sharing it, but then also internally strategizing accordingly. And so before, there used to be an addendum of goals and strategic planning, and they wanted to make it so it was a little more functional, because there were some matters that were included in the bylaws that were very specific and very explicit, and then you're handcuffed even when you're just trying to evolve and operate. And so they wanted to, based on what was shared with me from my predecessor, they wanted to make it more realistic and functional.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Councilmember Baker, anything as we hear as I know there?
Just wanted to thank our, the current and the former executive directors for their great work with us, and of course, for the board for bringing this to us tonight. The bylaws are the ways in which that board operates and functions to help serve our downtown. And these updates, omnibuses they may be, are very straightforward and helpful to ensure the smooth operations of our board. So I'm very grateful for this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor.
I certainly concur with everything that you just said. As it relates to efficiency, making sure everybody knows the expectations and being on the same page to allow our DDA to continue to do the wonderful work that they were recognized for earlier, Main Street, and continue to do for our community. So thank you. Seeing no additional questions or comments, Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on M. 7522?
Henon?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Vilani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes. Ms. Mitchell, we move on to number 10, please.
Motion number M. 7622, matter of adopting updated City of Berkeley Freedom of Information Act FOIA procedures and guidelines.
Is there a motion to approve M. 7622?
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Councilmember Henon with support from Councilmember Gavin. Mr. Baumgarten?
I think it's Mayor. Our city attorney has helped us, yes, keep us updated on this ever-evolving law, so I will defer to him on this.
I didn't want to feel like you were cut out.
No, that's fine.
Mr. Steren?
Oh, that's fine. Thank you, Council. Councilmembers may recall, or if not, I'll advise you, but we are required under the Michigan Freedom of Information Act to adopt Freedom of Information Act procedures and guidelines, and also a public summary of those procedures and guidelines, and have those accessible on our website. And the council did that back in 2016. So this is really the first time we've taken a look at those and updated them. And the reason it's coming to you tonight is mainly for that reason, to update them, but at the same time, do a little housekeeping. We discovered some typographical and formatting things, and with Councilman Henon's help, we discovered even a few more that we hadn't discovered originally, as well as some inconsistencies, particularly in regard to the appeal process. If someone is aggrieved by the denial of a FOIA request, we had one document saying the appeal goes to council, and we had the other document saying it goes to the city manager. So some fairly important things, and probably the main update is in regard, is to make our policies and procedures consistent with the state law, which has been amended a couple of times. The primary amendment was what we refer to as the Emily amendments. And councilmembers who were on, counsel a few years back, and certainly Victoria Mitchell will remember this, back, I think it was in 2018, communities in Michigan statewide, in fact, may have been every community in Michigan, got hit with FOIA requests submitted by Emily. No contact information, no address, no identifying information. And these were fairly significant FOIA requests, requested a lot of information relating to the previous presidential election, including copies of ballots and so on, but it left nobody to, nobody to contact other than this mysterious Emily. So, which eventually, just to kind of complete the story for council, turned out to be a national voting rights group. But in response to these Emily requests, the state legislature did amend FOIA, and it does now require people making FOIA requests to include identifying information, name, address, phone number, email. So that's one of the primary things that we amended here. There are also a few amendments relating to how fees are calculated and so on. So combination of updates and cleanup, and it's presented to you for the first time since 2016 for your consideration and adoption.
Thank you, Mr. Steren. Questions for our attorney? The updates to the document that we have in front of us.
It's good.
It is relatively comprehensive, those of you that haven't had a chance to look at it yet, and hopefully serves the residents and the staff of the city as well, and able to fill the requests that we can fill that are filed with our updated process. So there was a lot of reading that went into this and looking at things and making sure there was consistency across the board, as was referenced. There were some things that were not. There were some typos here and there. And it's not the most exciting reading, not going to lie. So I appreciate everybody taking the time to make sure that we do this properly. And so I'm glad we're able to present this this evening. Seeing no additional questions or comments, Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on M. 7622?
Price?
Yes.
Vilani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henon?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes. We now move on to communications, and I believe you're going to start with Councilmember Vilani.
Yes.
Look at you. You get it right every once in a while.
For the TAC Committee, the July meeting was canceled and will reconvene in August with the CEAC so that we can include all of the newly appointed members. From Berkeley Area Chamber, first, big congrats on another successful Berkeley Street Art Festival and to all the winners of the chalk art contests. Had a chance to walk around, and it was a lovely event and cool to see all of that art being made in the process. Speaking of events, chamber members still have time to sponsor Cruise Fest t-shirts. So if you'd like to get in on that, visit the website for more details for Cruise Fest coming up in August. Additionally, they are now accepting advertising for the 2022 Berkeley Huntington Woods Guide, which will be published in late October. It is a great advertising opportunity to get out to all of these residents. And then lastly, there's going to be a Burke Perk discount card, which will be sold to the general public later this year. For more information on getting your business involved and offering a discount on a little pocket-sized card, please reach out to them. They are soliciting through the end of August, I believe. And that's it for me.
Thank you. Councilmember Gavin?
Thank you, Your Honor. So for Planning Commission, we saw a couple of things from the last Planning Commission on our agenda tonight. And the next meeting will be July 26 at 7:00 PM here in Council Chambers. There has been no Environmental Advisory Committee meeting since our last council meeting, so the next one will be July 21 at 6:30 on the second floor of the Public Safety Building. And lastly, I feel like I'm giving this communication more and more, so message to the Planning Commission, no more. But I just wanted to take a moment to thank Mark Richardson for his expertise, his thoughtfulness, his level-headed approach during his time on Planning Commission. He certainly brought a unique and very important perspective to this role. And so, Mark, thank you for all your years of service, but we'll still be seeing you around the EAC. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Gavin? Mayor Protam?
Thank you. Come out for some summer fun with Parks and Recreation. The Movies in the Park continues on Tuesday, tomorrow, July 19, with a Christmas in July theme and a showing of the movie Elf at Oxford Park. The movie begins at 7:00. Summer Fest continues on July 21 with the annual JC Jamboree at JC Park, and that begins at 5:30. And you can come out and join us for some summer tunes in the park, big summer theme and stuff going on. The Summer Concert Series Berkeley Beats, presented by Berkeley Parks and Recreation, continues on July 27 with the Billy Davis Rhythm Machine Band with special guest Mighty Michael at Oxford Park at 7:00 PM. Tunes continue for the Berkeley Beats series on August 10, also at Oxford Park at 7:00 PM, with the Harmonic Swell and the Bridge to Reverberation. The Concert Series will end for the summer on October 31 with Moxie Blitz at the Community Center Lawn. For information on any of these events, recreation programs, and more, you can always go to recreation.berkleymish.org or call us at 248-658-3470. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Baker?
Thank you, Your Honor. Yeah, hooray for summer. I hope everybody stays hydrated out there and enjoy these beautiful days that we have ahead of us here. The Historical Committee is very happy that so many of our visitors are enjoying the new museum layout. It had a complete makeover recently, and so there's now room to display twice the number of historic photos as we used to be able to show. So if you haven't been to the museum lately, please come check it out. There's also a new display of Berkeley High School class photos on display, and folks are having a lot of fun trying to find themselves in the pictures. You know how that always goes. It's always a good time. And to continue that theme, the Historical Committee has been granted unlimited access to the Berkeley School District archives. So through that partnership, they're continuing to identify and scan and digitize and preserve historic artifacts and recent things as well with the school district. So please come check that out. And they're very grateful to the, to the school district for their support there. Visitors are always welcome to the museum. It's open on Wednesdays from 10 o'clock until 1:00 in the afternoon, and on Sundays from 2:00 until 4:00. And you can visit them online at berkeleyhistory.com. Our DDA Board of Directors met last Wednesday, the 13th, and as was mentioned earlier, they debriefed and discussed about the Berkeley Pride Block Party and are planning to have a more robust after-action conversation about all the things that went well and the things that they like to build upon to make next year's event even more successful. They're also working on crosswalks on Coolidge, some murals, some facade grants, some parking study, and other great things to advance our downtown. Volunteers are always welcome to help out with these various events, and you can learn more about the cool things that are going on with our DDA at downtownberkeley.com. And finally, it was Aristotle who once wrote, "The aim of art is not to represent the outward appearance of things, but their inward significance." And so, wow, this Berkeley Street Art Fest last weekend was absolutely amazing. Tremendous weather. I'd like to thank all of you who put in the requests for good weather. You know, I think it certainly paid off. You know, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And again, kudos to the chamber for a fantastic event, for all the volunteers, for all the businesses, to all the vendors, and again, to all the volunteers that made it a success. Please try to find ways to bring art into your life and celebrate each day. And with that, I'd just like to ask everybody to please stay safe and hug somebody that you love. It matters more than you think. Thank you all. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Price?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Turbrack. As the council liaison to the Library Board, I'd like to welcome Margaret McGee to the team. The Library Board's next meeting is this coming Wednesday, and they will be discussing their proposed updates to the board's establishing ordinance in addition to their regular business. That board meets at 7:00 PM in the library's meeting room, and all are welcome to attend. As the council liaison to the Citizens Engagement Advisory Committee, I'd like to welcome Jacob Robinson to that team. The CEAC is currently partnering with the Technology Advisory Committee to act as a focus group for the city's current branding and website development initiative. They continue to do that work together, grateful for both boards and their participation in it. And between now and our next city council meeting is a primary election. I'm sure that Ms. Mitchell, our city clerk, is about to give us all the practical details, but I just wanted to take this opportunity to encourage everyone to get out and vote, either on Election Day or with an absentee ballot, which you can fill out and return directly to the clerk with no excuses needed. Our election process is safe and secure, and the more people who vote, the stronger our democracy becomes. Circle Tuesday, August 2 on your calendar, and don't let that day pass without making your valuable contribution to our democratic process. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Henon?
Yes, with the Tree Board, a small group of us, including myself, have been discussing and preparing a tree canopy study using the same data and tools that the expensive consultants would have charged us. So that's coming along well. And when the full board resumes meeting in September, they will start to review it and make recommendations on how we can use that data to better target where we're planting trees and other sorts of things. The ZBA met a week ago. They approved the use of Old Jerry's TV on 12 Mile as a duplex. This was allowed in large part because it's always had a residential component in that building that's been in continual use. And because of the age, the codes would make it an undue hardship to make it three or more units, which would normally be required by our design ordinance. They denied a variance on 11 Mile for a combination work-liv unit. It had that use in the past, but hasn't had it for the past four years, so that non-conforming status had elapsed. And the requested variance just wasn't harmonious with the uses of the surrounding properties. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Baumgarten?
I think it's Mayor. As you recall, July, or June was Summer Safety Month, talking about dehydration and temperatures. Even as we meet this evening at 8:27, it's still 88 degrees outside, and temperatures continue to climb into the 90s for at least the foreseeable future on the 10-day forecast here. So I want to remind people to continue to be safe, be cognizant of the effects that heat can have on you, especially in these dry days. We don't notice how much body moisture you're losing. I know that at the Chalk Art Festival, we did have some instances of people feeling woozy, lightheaded, succumbing to the effects of heat. That can happen anywhere, and I want to continue to urge people to be safe in summer. Us Michiganders are not used to this kind of heat, but it takes an absolute toll on everyone out there. So please continue to be safe all month long. And then also want to ask or add a thank you to our state and federal leaders. The city has been pursuing federal and state funding for some much-needed capital projects. We've been getting some very positive news from state level and the federal level. It's fantastic to have such great working partners in our elected leadership. So thank you very much to all of them on the good news we've been getting and hope to turn that into some good capital projects soon. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Mitchell?
Yes. Thank you, Councilmember Price, for mentioning the election. We do have an election coming up before our next meeting. The election is August 2, and it is a primary election. All precincts will be open from 7:00 AM till 8:00 PM, all of our seven precincts. And it's also not too late to receive an absentee ballot, if that is how you prefer to vote. Please contact the clerk's office for information for the most expedited way to receive your ballot, and we can give suggestions on how to return it. And speaking of absentee ballots, if you have your completed absentee ballot at home and it's ready to go, the clerk's office does appreciate it if you would drop it off at your earliest convenience. It is helpful for us to receive it. Residents also may still register to vote. Beginning tomorrow, any resident may register to vote with proof of residency. So you'll need to visit the clerk's office beginning tomorrow in order to register to vote, and you can give us a call if you're unsure. It's basically a utility bill, rental agreement, things like that, any government document. And also, the clerk's office will be open from 8:30 AM to 4:30 PM on Saturday, July 30. That's the Saturday before the election for all election needs that anyone may have. And I also would like to bring up redistricting cards, ID, voter ID cards, hopefully have hit everyone's mailbox. They were... Hopefully have hit everyone's mailbox. They were sent out. If anyone did not receive their new card, they can give me a call. And the main takeaway that I want all the residents to know is that no precincts in the City of Berkeley has changed, so no actual polling location. So if you voted during the November election or the prior presidential election, you still will vote at your same location. What has changed for Berkeley are district numbers. So the district numbers have changed. And another change for the City of Berkeley is the state rep district. We now Berkeley split into two. So we were covered by one state rep district, and now Berkeley is covered by two. So if anyone has any questions, I know it's a lot of information, but come out and vote on August 2. Or if you're voting absentee, drop your ballot off. And if you have any questions regarding the district boundary or redistricting, please give us a call. That does happen every 10 years. I know a lot of people ask. It's due to the census, so after that, there's a committee that looks at all the boundaries. Our phone number is (248) 658-3310. Or you can send us an email at clerk@berkeleymish.net or stop in.
Thank you. Mr. Attorney?
Well, I can't compete with the city clerk tonight. I have nothing to report.
I also cannot compete with the city clerk, however, or any night. But since our last meeting, it's been talked about a number of times throughout our meeting, about our community, about folks being out, seeing a lot of activity. Since our last meeting, that I attended at least, we've had the Art Bash, Lids for Kids. Both the Moms Club and the Dads Club have hosted tournaments with all kinds, tons of people visiting our community, all to very, very positive reviews, not only with the fields and the setup of the tournament, but just the people of Berkeley, how welcoming they've been. And certainly the Pride Block Party and then the Street Art Fest that we had just this past weekend that I had the pleasure of judging, which some people, I'm sure, would disagree with that and my lack of artistic eye. But there's just the number of folks that were there and walking around throughout the day. Just a lot of excitement in our community and a lot of folks getting out. And that's a tribute to all of our residents and what we want our city to be. Kids are running around everywhere. Mr. Baumgarten, you alluded to the temperature. We've got a great splash pad that you can run through. That'll cool you down a little bit. And if you want to go play on the park or the toddler structure right next to it, go ahead. You can even go to the bathroom if you'd like. We've got that option as well. So tremendous amenities in our community. But the single best amenity that we have is just our residents and how welcoming we are to folks who are visiting our community and the care that we all take in our community. So I want to thank all of the residents for continuing to make Berkeley such a special and unique place to be. And with that, I will call for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Mayor Protam Dean with support from Councilmember Baker. Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll?
Baker?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henin?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Vilani?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes. The July 18, 2022, meeting of the 39th Council of the City of Berkeley is adjourned.